So this is Tuesday, July 14th, 2020, meeting of the Berlin Planning Board. As a preliminary matter, please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware, other folks may be able to see you. Take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast will be captured by recording and preserved for the rest of our natural lives. This is Tom Sanford, member of the planning board. Permit me to confirm all the members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me prior to me calling the meeting to order. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Let me see, everybody jumped around. Jay Teach?
Here.
Caroline McDonald?
Here.
Timothy Wheeler?
Here.
And Tom Sanford here. Staff has jumped off, so we won't have staff. We have a quorum of the board present and we called the meeting to order at 7:38 PM this Tuesday, July 15th, 2020. This is an open meeting of the planning board. To be considered remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of Corona-19 virus. Specific information and the general guidelines for the remote participation by members of the public and or parties with right and or requirements to attend the meeting can be found on the Town of Berlin's website at www.townofberlin.com. In order to mitigate transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of this of the open meeting law to have all meetings in public accessible by physical location. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed to and are encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, provided reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. While no in-person attendance of members of the public is permitted, every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event we are unable to do so, despite our best efforts, we will post on the town's website an audio or video recording, transcript and or comprehensive recording of the proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting concludes. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless the participants are required by law. The standard public comment portion of this meeting will accommodate limited public comment. For this meeting, the board, the planning board is convening using a Zoom platform as posted on the agenda and identifying how the public may join. Where, where, do we have to do that? We probably should. We will take meetings, we'll take items that are on the agenda, but before we do so, we'll permit to cover some ground rules, effective and clear conduct of our business to ensure accurate meeting minutes. Speakers will be introduced on the agenda after they conclude their remarks. Board members by name will be invited to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold your comments and questions until your name is called. Board members and speakers who are on the agenda, remember to mute your phone or computer while you're not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the floor has recognized you. State your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in conversation with each other, please do so through the chair, carefully identifying yourself. The comments portion of the agenda, to the extent that that's technically capable and to that our technical capability allows, public comment will be permitted during public comment portion of this meeting as follows. Attendances phones and other devices will be muted unless they are asked to raise their hand to be recognized by a chair to speak. Each member of the public who wishes to speak, to identify their names, each speaker will be afforded time to ask questions and make brief comments. Each, finally, each vote to be taken at this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. That's it.
Nice job. Thank you.
Yep.
We need to reorganize. Do we have a motion for, from the crowd to nominate anyone as a chair?
I nominate Tom as chair.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Wait, wait, wait.
Calling the roll call.
Wait, wait, wait. I'm raising my hand for some discussion and comment.
Yes, sir.
So if, if I take on this role as chair, the duties of secretary will pass on to somebody else?
Yes, we have someone we're going to nominate for that too.
Okay, so we're starting from the top down. I get it. Okay, then I guess I'm okay with my comment period.
Any other comments? All those in favor? No, I have to go with this. Jay?
In favor. Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Tom?
Nay.
Aye. It's a vote.
There we go.
I'll turn over the, the, the rest of the meeting to you, Dr. Sanford and.
Lovely. Thank you.
Would you like a motion for the secretary?
Yes, please.
I nominate Jay.
Second.
Is there any discussion to be had on this motion?
Do I have to do anything for this position? No, I'd be happy to do it.
It'll make it easier to write the annual report.
That's true. Ha, he's got to take it electronically.
Yeah.
Try. Okay, any other discussion? No.
Great idea.
Hearing, hearing none, I'll ask you to vote by roll call. Tim?
Aye.
Caroline?
Aye.
Jay?
Aye.
Tom? Aye. The vote is unanimous. Congratulations, Jay. You are new secretary.
I always wanted to be secretary. Thank you.
And I will move my pen over to the other screen. Okay, so we have two items that I know of that are on the agenda that Ron had sent around. The first one is the A and R on Gates Pond Road, Atta Farms. Seth is on the phone, but I don't know how we can.
He's also on by video, Tom.
Okay.
Oh, good.
Can we, can we, yes, can you put him, advance him or up, up his status?
I just upped his status. You're all set.
Okay, he's on mute right now.
I'll ask him to unmute. Hang on.
Good evening, Seth. How are you? Get some feedback on them.
How's that?
Much better. Thank you.
All right.
So you have an A and R on Gates Pond Road?
Yes.
Understand. Okay, so we were asked to look at. We were asked to look at.
Sorry, say again.
We were asked to look at a plan at our last planning board meeting. And that plan, we had a hard time following and there was nobody on the phone to support the plan. To my knowledge, I have not seen another revision of the plan. Is there one?
There is, there hasn't been a revision of the plan. The only thing that has been revised thus at this point, because it was all that was brought to our attention by Ron, was that we were insufficient in our fee, because we were creating four lots, not two. And the fee that he had given us was for $50, was for two lots essentially. So we paid the extra two lots. And that's, as far as we knew, the only thing that was under, I guess, confusion about the plan.
Okay, to my knowledge, the plan that we saw, I don't recall it, identifying four individual lots, showing frontage and what have you. So is it?
Okay.
How can we share this? Go ahead.
It does show four, four lots, all numbered. Lot one, two, three, and four has the correct amount of frontage on each lot, also square footage. At this point, there doesn't seem to be. I'm not, I'm not sure what the other confusion was. I can certainly email anybody the plan now if they don't have it. But we did drop off paper copies and email it the last time around. So I just didn't, I didn't prepare, I didn't plan on having to do that again, but I can certainly do that now.
Right, um, let me see if I can find it.
Yeah, I can see if I can give you a time range to look for, but. I can, I can forward this email that has both the, the Form A and the plan, if you'd like, to whoever you'd like me to send it to right now.
You know what? I have it on a stick, a memory stick.
I know I have it, but I can't find it.
Yeah, I have it on a memory stick.
What was the date of the email?
Six, four.
Okay.
Well, I have it. It's as six, four. I don't know if it was sent on six, four.
I have six, eight is the email that I had sent with the PDF of the plan and of the Form A. I can certainly send it again.
One second.
I wonder when I got it, who I got it from.
I had sent it into the town clerk who was forwarded on, I believe he sent it on to Ron.
Just found part of it.
I'm going to have to have you email it to me because I do not have a copy of it.
Oh, I just found it.
You did?
Sure. What email should I send it to?
Could you send it to T. Sanford@SanfordContracting.com?
I got T., I'm sorry, T. Sanford@Sanford.
Contracting.com.
Okay.
I just found it and sent it to everybody.
You did. Excellent. Thank you.
I think, I'll go back and try to open it up now, but it was the 8th of June.
Yeah, I just sent it to Tom as well.
Perfect. It does, it does have four lots in it also. We were trying to figure out what it was you were doing and it seems like you split one of the, one of the lots into two. Is that, because we didn't have the existing.
What we have is. Right. So the lot four and lot three were lots before, except because what the, what was lot three, which is, I can give you the, the number that it used to be. It used to be number 23. It was a non-informing lot that was owned by the same owner as the larger lot next to it. In order to make the frontage zoning, we added, we added frontage to it and so created a new lot for that one. We added, we, we added a, essentially a jog in number 21s, so that there was enough space between the garage and the property line. And then the, what, there was one that is lot one on our A and R plan that was an existing lot that was never recorded. It was endorsed about 10 years ago, but never recorded. And so it was given to us to try and get it recorded. But that surveyor had passed on. And so basically, the only change that we've made to that is we've put it on the mass coordinate system. But all the bearings, all the, all the distances are the same, the angles are the same. It's just on the mass coordinate system instead of the system that it was on previous to that. And then lot two is the completely new lot that was never there.
But lots three and four are already existing lots.
Yes. So four, four is essentially the same lot that it was before. There is, and there is a 50-foot line, a course, that that's near the garage of number 23, of lot three. And we added that to make the setback, the yard setback work for it. So in order to make basically that, that lot three conforming, we had to do a little bit of change around on it. It wasn't at the, when it was, whenever it was created the first time around, it wasn't, it wasn't enough frontage, there isn't enough area. So this was to bring it up to conforming levels on both.
To bring lot four into.
Lot, lot three. Lot four was already conforming. And, but lot three was almost half, or a little bit less than half of conforming. But it was the same owner as the larger piece, which from what my surveyor is saying is, is a problem as far as being possible titles being merged on it. So we changed lot to be a conforming lot and added the new one in between, the number two.
So really just lots one and two are new?
Yeah, it's really just lot two is the new one. Lot one, you guys have shown on your GIS as a separate lot already. It was just never recorded. It was endorsed. I, I don't have the date, but it was quite a while ago, a dozen years ago. It was endorsed, but it was never recorded. And so therefore, wasn't officially done. So they wanted that recorded. They were going to be basically dating that as a wedding present. So that was one of the things that we were tasked with doing. So that's part of this.
Where did it go? Crap. Yeah, so lot one is on the state GIS.
Yeah.
Right, just lot two's not.
Right, yeah, and you can see lot three is much smaller on the state GIS.
Yeah, if you, if you look at the GIS, you can see that lot three, which is number 23, Gates Pond, was definitely below.
Yeah.
The zoning requirements.
Yeah.
On both the frontage and the area.
House barely fits on it.
Yeah, exactly. So that, in the future, that, I believe that the intent is for that trailer that's on it to even come down and they were going to move the, move, put a, build a house further back on that lot anyway. But, um, but that's years down the line, so.
So if, I know this is, those probably, the existing lots three and four probably were in existence before zoning. Maybe Tim can help us out with this one. They, we have a combination of resi and commercial forming a lot that's got a residential dwelling on it that's located in the residential zone. Is there any concern that we should have there? Or is it just predate zoning and now we're making a more conforming lot and we should be happy?
Just because I can't read.
You can't read it.
Well, wait a minute. I can read the areas. I, I'm having trouble reading the frontage on lot four.
Uh, it. Hold on just one second. I'll grab the plan.
Looks like 144.55 feet. Oh, wait.
Fifty-six, fifty-six point four-five from the iron rod.
Yeah.
So brings it to 200.
Okay, so you're fine there.
Yep.
And, and there's no problem. Residential uses are allowed in the commercial village zone or commercial zone, so that's no problem.
Yeah.
Okay. Lot three works, lot two works. Lot one.
And just give, give us the figures on lot one in terms of frontage.
141.15 and 58.85.
So you're fine there too.
Yep.
Yeah. I mean, it's a big improvement. It's what it is, so.
Okay.
And the, the back of lot two just sweeps around and connects with all the rest of the land, so.
Right.
It's not landlocked or lost. It's connected, so that's a good. So, um, let me see if I can read a plan here. So I move, we accept a A and R plan. I can't read the date. Can you tell us when the plan was drawn?
The, the plan, the, the date of the A and R plan is May 22.
Okay, May 22, 20, 2020.
2020.
Um, prepared for, at a realty trust and it's. Well, I can't see who drew the plan.
Thompson Liston Associates, Inc.
There we go. Creating. Well, we say.
You need the assessors. So Berlin Assessors 21-56, 21-55, 17-3, 17-3-1. Book 14515, page 151.
Nice job.
You're welcome.
All that.
Takes a village.
Under the subdivision control on that requirement. That was the worst motion I've ever made in my life.
I'll second the motion.
You shouldn't.
I shouldn't. Jay seconds the motion?
Seconded.
Any other discussion?
Looks good. Cleans things up.
Okay, I guess we'll have a roll call vote. Tim?
Aye.
Jay?
Aye.
Caroline?
Caroline.
Caroline, sorry.
Aye.
And Tom? Aye. So it's unanimously voted in. So we need to circulate this. Where's the mila? Is the mila downtown?
The mila is, yeah, that was also submitted.
So it must be in our mailbox still.
Yeah, I would guess that it's, I think everything made it to Ron, or at least that he saw everything. I'm not sure where everything is now, I guess. It's a little bit more confusing.
It's still there, so.
This is Leanne. I can confirm that your mailbox in the mailroom is jam-packed.
Great. Ron emptied his basement out.
Yeah.
All right, so what I can do is I'll go down and see if I can find the mila and I'll circulate it around. Can I get into the town tomorrow afternoon or tomorrow evening? Is the doors open?
The, no, the doors are not open. You can only get in with someone with a fob or if you have an appointment. I'm there till 1 o'clock. I don't know if that helps you.
Not really.
Ron should have the fob, though.
Yeah, I don't know if he had access.
Rob, Rob didn't have access to it. No, no.
I think it's just employees.
I had one when I was chair for conservation.
Well, why don't you do a special?
I did, and then I passed it on.
Well, if anybody can get there tomorrow between 8:00 and 1:00, I'd be happy to let you in or, or hand you what's in the box.
If, if you'd like, I can go pick it up at that time. I can hand it off to whoever needs it after.
Let me see. You guys are in Boylston, so let's just.
We're in Boylston.
Yeah.
Tom?
Yes?
What time tomorrow would be good for you? Because I also have ZBA tomorrow night in Conservation Commission, so evening isn't good for me, but maybe in the afternoon I could let you in.
I'm usually back here by 5:00.
Okay.
That work for you or not?
Um.
How early are you daily in, in the morning?
I'm there at 8:00 AM. Yeah, I can meet.
Why don't I try to get up there? I've got to go to Grafton, but I'll be back. So I'll, I'll call you, Leanne, and I'll come up and get it.
Okay.
In the morning. You're there from 8:00 to noon?
Um, yes.
Okay.
If, if for some reason you can't make it, then Tom, I, I probably to meet you for 5:00.
Okay, so the plant, the initial will be Tim will pick it up in the morning. If Kim, Tim can't, you can either call me or let Leanne know and let me know somehow and then I'll go pick it up. So if you have the plan, if you, do you have a pen or not? You probably don't even have the pen, the magic pen.
Maybe I'll steal the magic pen while I'm there.
You can steal a magic pen while you're there. If you have the magic pen, I can, you going to be around tomorrow night?
Yeah.
Okay, so if I swing by your house, grab it, sign my name, deliver it to Jay and Caroline, we can get it all signed off to the clerk. Does that work?
Or I can leave it at the stand if people thought they could swing by the stand during the day tomorrow.
I'm leaving tomorrow night for some days up in New Hampshire, so if I can.
What time?
After the Conservation Commission meeting.
Oh, okay, so I'll be there before then.
Okay.
So, um. and then we can either, what will you create the do 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 do? I can FedEx it back to Seth at your office if you want.
And pick it up if if.
Well, you're gonna run into the same problem. You're not gonna be able to get in during the day.
I got, yeah, okay. All right.
Well, same same thing come Thursday. I'll be there 8:00 to 11:00. So if Seth could get there between 8:00 and 11:00, I'd be able to let him in.
I certainly can.
Faster than me FedExing it Seth, because you won't get it until at least Thursday, maybe Friday.
Yeah.
I can come, I can come in whenever, whenever need, you know, whenever it's ready.
We'll let you know if I get all the signatures done tomorrow night, um, I'll let you know, and then you can, you know, swing by and pick it up on Thursday. How's that?
Sounds great.
Okay, so now the only other thing is is that form A we have, uh, is there a check?
Yeah, all the updated checks. I mean, the the checks that Ron had requested have all been depo uh, all been brought in. Um, Alice Wright brought in the last little bit. I think the the remaining amount that she had to pay was another $50, um, that she brought that last Wednesday, so.
Okay, so we should be good there, so there's no reason why we can't let the plan go. Okay.
And if you guys find that you don't, if you find that you don't have it, I'll bring a check of my own, so.
No, no worries.
Just let me know.
Anybody else have any ideas or any, don't wanna change any of your plans that we're putting together here, or are we good?
All set.
Good, 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 okay. Okay, then that's what we'll do.
Okay.
Excellent. Well, thank you, Seth.
Very much.
Thank you for your patience.
Yep, thank you very much.
Thank you, Seth.
Good night.
Good night, thanks.
Okay, um, do Leanne, do you know whether we have anybody else that's?
There's a John Grenier in attendance.
Okay, so he must be for the um, the next item on the agenda, which is the Highland comment, the changes to Highland Senior Residential.
Okay, would you like me to promote him?
Uh, yes, please.
Okey doke.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Trying to get him to unmute and start his video. I'm not getting a response.
He may have walked away.
John!
Oh, there he is.
Yes.
I could use some help for a minute. I'll stop my video, okay.
I'm muted on my other meeting. Stop my video. So you want it? Yeah, sure. How's that? You good?
Yeah.
All right, I'm almost done with my other meeting.
Um, Steve Van Casse here, John Grenier was, he's at a Zoom meeting in Northridge at the time, and at the present also. He's uh.
Okay. Hi, Steve, how are you?
Good, um, so I'm Representative of Holmes Highland Ridge LLC, and we purchased the property from Chris Lane in uh, on Highland's Highland Street, and we started construction, and we wanted to modify some of the um, units themselves. We sent in a revised plan, uh, which I think you have. So the units are slightly bigger, and we thought that we would ask the board, um, just to be on the conserval side, for their determination, we'd like to call it a de minimis change. The units are four feet wider and about eight feet deeper, including a sunroof slash porch. So we sent the plan in uh, earlier in the week. I do have the plan, I could click on the plan. If you'd like also, we, what we did is overlay, um, the engineer did an overlay shot showing in really fine print, the the original proposed units in dark darker outline is the units that we are proposing. The original units were 40 feet apart, the new units are uh, on average 32 feet apart in some angles. We've uh we're maintaining a minimum of 20 feet apart at all places. Building code being 10 feet, it's still doubled now. Um, as you know, these units are all sprinkled also.
So the, so Steve, the number of units hasn't grown, right?
The number of units is the same, yes.
And the only configuration changes, I did, they just got a little bit larger and some porches put on. Like the the garages aren't gonna change or anything like that, right?
Uh, actually, we have two car garages there, and I think the original one, one one car garage is.
Right.
So glad, thank you for bringing that up.
So I guess the question before our board is going to be, um, is this a?
We're fine working with with you on that, that's that's not an issue whatsoever.
Uh, is gonna be whether this is a substantive change that will require us to revisit this. Um I don't think if the number of units haven't changed, they got a little bit larger, some porches were added, and you know, it's nicer now that it's a two car garage. Do we have a worry?
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Carolyn.
Um I I I only bring this up because this is just what I remember. Uh, at town meeting, when this project was approved, one of the appeals was that they were supposed to be smaller, more affordable units. And I'm assuming these changes will um, increase the selling price, therefore kind of going against the spirit of why this was approved at town meeting.
So, so Steve, how much percentage wise, square footage wise, how much of an increase are the units?
From the original, uh, square footage was 1,208 square feet, and the new square footage is 1,379, it's 170 square feet.
And that's an on average, or is that every unit?
That's on average, then that's one unit. And what we're proposing is, uh, we're actually proposing to do a ranch style unit too, which which would also be at a lower price point also. So we're uh, we we hope to capture both components of the of the market.
Right.
How many of the units will be ranch style?
That'll depend on the market. Any market derivative, so we'll be offering both. We'd like to build a suit.
And then you end up with uh a mix of the different types are then that that 25% is is of those are made affordable um, under the guidelines, right?
I thought it was 10% too. I mean, I'm sorry, 15% 10 units? Was he affordable? This is not affordable.
15%, yeah. 15%.
Which would be 9.9, which is rounded up to 10.
Be rounded up to 10.
10, yeah.
So, so if you have a mix of different, how many different styles will there be then? Half a dozen or?
Uh, two. We're not alone then, too.
So basically, you're gonna have two different footprints and and layouts.
Yes.
Uh, yeah, 678, so right now, um, in in the area, say behind uh, lot seven.
So your your question regarding the affordability, we do have an affordable component incorporated in the project.
The elevation is in the range of about elevation 300.
So affordable units will be only the ranch style?
No, not necessarily.
So it'll depend more on the finishes?
10 units will be affordable.
In the area of where they're gonna be, the houses behind him, and those yards are gonna be about around elevation 300. So these homes are gonna be about 25 or so feet lower, or the the topography will be all 25.
Um, do we have the overlay?
Yeah, on file.
This property, so um everything and everything is gonna be.
I mean, it doesn't, to me, it doesn't sound like it's a substantive change.
No, it doesn't.
You know, I mean, we we haven't lost or gained any units. We haven't lost or gained any affordable components. 170 square feet, and it's a large closet, you know?
These homes.
I think that having porch is probably more marketable. Definitely having two car garages is way better than a one. I don't see any downside to these changes. Does anybody else have any questions?
Tom, I just want to let you know that Eloise Salz is in attendance. I don't know if she had anything to add.
Okay, I'll I'll recognize her in a second. Any other of the board members have any um, comments? Questions beyond what we've basically went over?
In terms of topography, we're well.
No, so did we get? Was there, were there electronic drawings that we were supposed to have gotten a copy for this?
Um, I I don't know. I didn't receive anything.
We didn't send a copy in to the town clerk.
Paper, though.
I'm sorry?
Paper or a digital copy?
Digital, I could actually click on, I think I can click on it. I'm not too good, but if you want me to try, I can.
I would, I personally would like to just see it, just to feel better about it.
Yeah, I agree.
I'll try this. Were you able to click onto that? No.
We still see your sunshiny face.
So down at the bottom, see where it says share screen? Is that what you're trying to do?
I don't know, uh, yeah, there was a I see if my engineer can do two meetings at once.
Oh, you want it? Is that good?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I got it, I got it, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm I'm actually.
Okay, there's the plan. I don't know if you can still hear me?
We can hear you, but we see, we see you, we don't see the plan.
You don't see the plan?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, I.
It's on my screen.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to.
All right, well, while you're trying to do that, um, Leanne, can we promote or raise up Eloise to the next level?
Sure, do that now.
Thank you.
I'm actually trying to, between two Zoom meetings. It's one of those nights. Uh, I I'm sorry, I was, I was trying to help my uh.
This is crazy, he's uh, he's doing a presentation.
No, this, this is.
I just muted Eloise, she can hear us.
Good evening, Eloise, how are you?
Okay.
Good, we're discussing uh, stuff on Highland.
The day, the day I got the digital, I forwarded it to all the planning board because I had a hard time adding Carolyn, but I finally sent it to her as a separate.
Huh. What date did you send it, Eloise? Because I never got it.
Maybe two Thursdays ago?
No, definitely not.
Well, ask him when he sent it, because that's when I would have sent it to everybody. Because I have one email that says planning board.
What address would it have been shown as? Town clerk or what would it say?
Yes, it would have showed as town clerk.
Copy Jay?
We would anticipate that would be um connected duplexes that be.
Yeah, I don't have anything.
I don't either.
Sold as, uh, sold individually, so.
An email from you on the 22nd.
You know, common, um.
Talks about this project.
Like condo, you know, for for common areas in terms of, you know, yard maintenance, or they may have exclusive use areas for each one, but they would be sold individually, but it would be one structure with a common wall. Well, it's not like a, it's not like a condo association where typically a condo association, they would be have multiple buildings on one piece of land, one continuous piece. These are individual lots with duplexes.
So Steve, do you wanna try this again? So when you move the mouse on the bottom of the screen, a couple of things pop up, kind of a menu.
Where each.
See, one of them says share screen. I know, so, but you have to move the mouse in order for it to show up.
Okay.
And you have to be on the Zoom window.
And that would be done as part of, um, you know, an individual, um, an individual agreement for each lot.
You can see the reflection of your computer in the window.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay, so now do you see where it says share screen down at the bottom?
They'll almost put like an easement line down the middle.
Yeah.
For instance, if you.
Click on that.
Exclusive use.
You should then be able to click on the the window that has the plan. And that
exclusive rights.
Should do it for us.
Almost an easement plan.
Oh, look at you.
Excellent.
One does never cease.
You got it.
Good. So this is the new proposal?
This is the overlay plan. This shows in fine print, shows the original plan submitted by Chris Lane, and the dark print is this print here. It's I mean, a quick glance, you can't handle difference. You have to look closely to see the differences.
Okay.
But it's all, so if you look in the legend, the right hand side, you'll see the very top. It says that's the original plan, and then just slightly down from there. I'm looking just below the north arrow.
Yes.
It shows that in the darker print is the, that's showing the legend.
Got it.
So if you look closely at each unit, you'll see the fine lines, that's the original one.
Right. So it is definitely minimal. And well within that, yeah.
Yeah, I would say that it's minimal.
It's it's essentially the same size, and we we maybe didn't need to go through this process, but we wanted to err on the side of caution. We're just starting up here, we wanna do a good job. If you if you drew it up there, you know, we've opened up the roadway, we plan on doing a really nice job landscaping it from curb appeal. I I think you're gonna be real happy with your C R work.
Is Eloise, Eloise, are you still on the?
Yes.
Okay, so we had asked before if there was any, members, members of the board had any comments or questions, and we were just trying to determine whether there was a uh, a major change or a minor change, and whether that would force us to have to revisit this um, in a major way, or if this is a minor that we could approve as a board. So we were asking if anybody had any questions. Um, for you, from your standpoint and your various hats that you wear, is there any questions that you have uh, for the proposed changes?
No, just as a house, as a housing partnership member, I would like him to come before us, and uh, we had asked that at least one. And we had asked that at least one market rate and one affordable be handicap accessible.
Okay.
That's, that's something in the future I'd like, I would definitely like that opportunity. We have some great ideas. We're working with some nonprofit agencies and we're actually constructing homes for handicap people. As we speak, we have several under construction and like to share some of the ideas I have with the board and the housing partnership. It'd be nice if we could get back to normal meetings until Eloise here, but maybe we'll get used to doing business this way. And who knows, maybe we'll like it down the road. Right now, it's very uncomfortable for me. I know that. I'm used to coming in person and speaking, presenting.
So Steve, we can count on you to facilitate having a meeting with Eloise and the housing partnership to discuss these plans, these, the handicap, what you're doing now?
Absolutely.
Okay, good.
I I don't know. I've heard Ted just to try to do a Zoom meeting or wait until things get back to in person. I'm not sure how you'd like to handle that. We have a little bit of time. It's, it's, it'd be your call, Eloise, how you'd like to handle it.
I would have to talk to the other members.
Okay.
So Steve, high level, when will you have the first unit up?
Well, we'd probably be right about, right about December, maybe.
December, okay.
I'm talking about finished.
Yeah.
We'd like to start it next month.
Yeah.
We want to pave the first section of road by the end of this month and get a, get a trailer out front for for doing open houses to have people come in and look at the property.
Correct, yep. I'd just like to see one of the units.
Okay. Well, we will definitely have a model towards the end of the year.
Great. Does anybody else on the board have any other questions or comments?
I'm good.
Okay, can I entertain a motion that we consider this to be a non-substantial change? And that the board can approve the plan as it's being presented to us as a minor alteration?
The word they use is de minimis, I guess.
De minimis?
Yeah, it's de minimis.
That's kind of fancy for us, don't you think?
It's tough to spell, too, let me tell you.
No one, no one will make a motion?
Oh, I'll make some, I'll make that motion. So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote that this plan presented to us is a minor modification and not a major one, a de minimis change. Tim?
Aye.
Jay?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Uh, Tom, aye. So it's voted in that this is a minor change. So we should be good.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So.
We need to get our meeting back.
Right. Right, so Leanne, can you?
I can do that if Leanne's.
There we go.
There we go.
Perfect.
Oh, where'd Tim go?
He was, we could hear him before. He took the roll call. Did he leave, did he go away?
I think so. I don't know if he meant to, but I think he did.
Yeah, I don't see him anymore, but I only demoted John Grenia, who was actually Steve and.
Yeah, Steve, yep.
Hmm. Wonder if he's gonna come back.
I'll watch, I'll keep an eye out for him.
Okay, thank you. Those are the two items that I knew were on the agenda. I don't think there is anything else, only, you know, new business or timely.
Right.
Items for new business. Does anybody have anything that they want to?
I have something, but Tim also was getting the emails today, so.
Do you want to enlighten the rest of us?
I do. So there is a piece of property on the corner of River Road and Marlboro Road.
Right.
It is, has a fair amount of wetlands on it and really.
Certainly does.
Yeah, and so it won't perk. There is a little, I think it's fifty feet of frontage on River Road, a little triangle of land that is in Hudson. And they would like to tie into Hudson Water and Sewer.
Good luck. I thought there was a moratorium on that.
Hmm, they have a letter dated today to the new owners of the property from Hudson allowing this. And a couple of different conversations with Margaret and Paul McElk. And the general feeling is, is that there, the Board of Health doesn't have any regulations to prevent this, but that we, as the planning board, may want to look into putting forward something to prevent such a situation in the future.
Well, we have, as a precedent, we haven't allowed lots to be accessed from other parcels in other towns. But I, to my knowledge, to my knowledge, I don't know is if we have disallowed tie-ins to other municipals', municipalities', infrastructure. I know commercially we do because we did it up in Highland Commons because it shares property line right down the center of it.
Right.
Same with the the mall. So commercially, I don't know, we don't have, we have precedent for it, but residentially, I don't think we have anything. The only thing that comes to mind, but I don't think it was a house issue, it was a dry, it was setback issue, was Patty's parcel, the Patty property that we approved. And then the other one would be, it's Sally's that's on River Road East, West, East. Those are the only two that I know of that have shared lots in two different towns, residential, in two different towns. Any, any reservations from you, Tim?
Okay, I lost power for a minute, so I'm back. And can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
So did you get this email from Margaret today?
Yeah, so that's what I was talking about.
Okay, so yeah, that's what you're talking about. I mean, he's drafting a notification process. I mean, to me, it opens Pandora's box.
Agreed.
Right, so.
I'm not eager to see us. Like we've done it with the commercial, like you've said, but that's an entirely different ballgame. Because, I mean, there may only be this one instance, but you know, who knows? That's the thing that concerns me.
So I think, I mean, in my, I had a conversation with Paul McElk this afternoon, and he was saying that, you know, as far as they're concerned, there's nothing that they can see to prevent this lot. But do we want to consider a bylaw or something?
It won't be in time.
To prevent it in, it won't be in time for this property, but to to keep Pandora's Box closed, I guess.
Yeah, I, I don't know if it is generated by the planning board. It seems like it might very well come from the Board of Health, but I think it's, it's important for the Board of Health that they're concerned, and we can encourage them to work with town council to draft the type of language that would allow us to step in and.
There's, right now, there's no provision in our bylaws that say that a lot has to perk or a lot has to. We're just creating a lot out of frontage and area, right? So, you know, if we deny it, I, you know, we're arbitrary and capricious at that point. So I think we have to tread lightly. But if there was something, like you said, there was teeth on the other side from another, you know, board.
Well, I would think we'd still be approving the lot. It just that.
We would, right.
Somebody else would have the authority to say, like the building inspector would say, you, you can't demonstrate that you can perk it. If you can't, and we're not gonna allow it.
Right.
So you think any few, any regulations for any future situations like this should come from the Board of Health?
Yeah, because I think that if we tried to do something like that, then we're overstepping our authority.
Right.
Okay.
As far as I can see, I, I can't think of any reason why we'd be able to step on that.
Yeah, we're never in a position to anticipate a lot's ability to be perked.
Right.
That's for someone else to worry about.
Right.
Right.
So would we, and so that, they would definitely cover water and sewer. And really, I guess, there wouldn't be any other issues with tying into, there wouldn't be a reason for a property to be involved with a different town for any other reason except for septic, really.
You, you might end up with a curb cut from another town that then came through that town and into your property if you weren't going to use your frontage in Berlin for your curb cut. I, I mean, that's a possibility, I suppose, but there would be selectmen.
Right.
We've always tried to discourage that, though.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep, this is part of my learning curve.
Yeah, no.
Well, it's good because we revisit some of these issues that, you know, help us sometimes reevaluate the position we've taken in the past, you know, we may say, well, can we still justify that, you know?
Right.
It's good to ask the questions.
Yep, yeah, I mean, Paul was definitely expressing, and I've seen it on conservation, that to, in his words, sketchier lots are starting to come up because everything, you know, it's, and.
It's gonna continue. We're gonna see a lot of funky sloped lots and what have you, and ones that are hard to develop that everybody's passed on up until now.
Those two that we just approved, they're almost vertical.
I know.
Yeah, yeah.
I know.
Yep.
There have been times in the past when, I think back when we were working with Tainer Moore, he suggested that we might want to look at a, a provision in the bylaw that addressed slope as one of the conditions that gets evaluated, so. And ridge line zoning, you know, we've talked about that, trying to protect ridge lines and few sheds. There may be instances where it's important for us to have some controls that we don't have now.
Right. I mean.
I think that, that might very well be something that we'd work in concert with the Conservation Commission, and it might very well be that, that they might identify what they thought was the appropriate language that we could then incorporate into the zoning bylaw if it's possible.
Yeah.
What's the, what's the reason for not wanting to allow water and sewer from another source rather than on the property?
Well, years ago, Emerson would always say, Emerson Chandler, who was on the Z B A forever. His concern was that when you begin to allow water and surge, your defense of the two acre lot disappears. And if we're prepared for that, I mean, that's fine, but if, if we still think that, that, that the two acre zoning is appropriate, then we need to be cautious about water and surge. We may very well be at a stage where we feel creating lots that are less than eighty thousand square feet would be appropriate. It would reduce expense and, you know, but maybe as Ron was proposing, it ought not to be willy nilly, you know, plug a little substandard lot into any part of town. Maybe it's part of a larger effort that really addresses workforce housing issue and finds ways to reduce lot size so you can increase the number of units and, you know, then talk about some sort of shared services that allows that workforce housing. Not to be in the affordable realm, but being reasonably priced for that workforce that we want to try to accommodate.
Is that the cluster zoning?
I personally would love to explore that more.
Oh, God.
I know. You and I have talked about this a little bit, but.
We've run that flag up the pole three times, and three times you've come away, nothing.
Yep, but you know, the town is changing, the demographics of the town is changing.
That's true.
The needs of the town is changing. You know, I mean, when the average new home that's being built, the average older home that's for sale is half a million or more.
Yep.
Yeah.
We're definitely going to continue to change the demographics of the town if that's the price point we're at.
Well, and if we're, we're, it's sixteen and whatever percent for affordable units, so we've kissed forty Bs goodbye, then the, the vehicle that we need to develop that allows for housing that's less than that five hundred thousand dollar range may have to be through some other means, such as some of the things that Ron was talking about. And we've, I mean, we've been exploring, and we just haven't come up with the right package yet, but I think it's, I mean, it's out there. There must be something that we can do. With Senni's had that project in Concord that, you know, was essentially workforce housing. It was like seven or eight units on a small little subdivision road, and the units were all smaller in scale. And, and Chris Senni's son worked on evaluating projects from around the country that developed housing that had a smaller footprint, that was, were on smaller lots. And he, he shared some model zoning that is hidden somewhere. I should dig that up and we could look at that again, too.
Yeah, because there is a sweet spot, I think, between, you know, what it realistically costs to build a new house and all of that, you know, the half million and above, and affordable housing, which you have to meet a certain criteria that's significantly lower. But that whole middle portion, which most of us fall into, isn't, you know, really being, I don't know, I don't know if addressed is the right word, but, but it needs to be addressed.
It's a good challenge. I like that.
Or it could be one of our goals for upcoming year.
Yeah, I would, and, and, you know, from just in talking to people around town, there is definitely a desire for that kind of, like you said, Tim, workforce housing. But we have to make it feasible for someone to actually build it.
It's gonna come down to infrastructure.
Right. Yep.
Development costs, that's where it's gonna be at.
Yep.
So. Okay.
Cool. All right, so I mean, as far as Margaret's email, I mean, I'll talk to Paul. I'll follow up with Paul about the planning board putting something together. Potentially.
Well, I think it's gonna have.
I mean, not that, I'm sorry, the Board of Health.
Yes.
Right.
Yep.
Yep.
Because we, we'd be comfortable with it, I think. Because we, we'd be comfortable with it, I think. Happy to support it.
Right.
Awesome.
It may not be different than what's already stated, maybe just a clarification. Maybe the Board of Health's requirement for water and sewer may already say it needs to be on site.
Yeah, well, it doesn't. It doesn't currently, but. Cool.
Does anybody have anything else?
Margaret asked the boards to reaffirm their appointments to the Community Preservation Act Committee. And I said I'd be happy to serve from the planning board, when we talked about this earlier. I, I'm still willing to serve if you want me to.
I don't have any objections. Anybody else have any objections?
Nope.
How many members are there? Carolyn, seven?
So it's historical, planning, conservation, who else? Recreation. And then.
Two at large from the selectmen.
Two at large, and then there's one other, is it FinCom has to be involved? I know there were the four, the four boards that directly are named as being able to spend the funds, and then one other, I think it was FinCom, and then two at large from the community.
Eloise has just raised her hand, so I don't know if she.
She probably has the answer.
Is it Housing Partnership?
Hang on, I just, I'm allowing her to speak, but she needs to unmute. There you go, Eloise. Eloise?
She's still muted.
I think it's Housing Partnership.
I keep unmuting her, and she keeps muting herself.
Oh, no.
There's Eloise.
Okay, it is the Housing Partnership.
Okay.
Good. Great.
And ultimately, can I get something written of your reorganization?
No.
Then it can't happen.
Did you say ultimately?
Yeah, for you, that sticks me.
It's in the minutes, how about that? We need something special.
You had a form at one time, we all had to sign, right?
What I did was I had Carolyn sign it, and then I copied your signatures from last year, I took off, and then I certified it.
That works. Is that like notarizing a, a photocopy of somebody's signature?
Yeah, but I did it as, not as a notary, but as a town clerk.
So it's fine.
There's more latitude there, right?
Well, I know, I know who is in what office.
Ah, okay. So Jay can write up an org chart, and we can send it to you.
Okay.
I have it in the minutes, isn't that?
Yeah. That should be good enough, right?
Jay, the new clerk?
Jay's the new clerk.
Wow, congratulations, Jay.
Thank you. It's been a couple of years coming to this appointment. I didn't have to campaign or anything.
Do you want a motion to adjourn?
No, I have something I would like to bring up.
Oh.
I was just waiting patiently, the rest of the board members had their say. So I had a request from the Schultz. They have asked, they wanted to know if we could advise them, planning board could advise who they should talk to about surveillance and infrared cameras that have now been erected around their property, and whether anybody in the town has any guidance or any say on what can and can't be recorded, and how it gets recorded and done, and what have you. And I said, I don't know who would have jurisdiction over that, and I don't even know if there is anything in, in place.
Doesn't state law cover that?
I wouldn't even know.
I know a guy who used to run an infrared camera company, and his brother ran an even bigger infrared, infrared camera company and sold a ton of equipment to the police and all that, so. Might be able to find that out.
My understanding is you can record your own property. And as long as that is the main focus, if there's like a car driving past on the street, that is just what it is.
Right, but you couldn't surveil your neighbor's property?
Correct, specifically, correct.
So if your neighbor erects cameras, what is your recourse?
It depends on if the prop, the neighbor's camera is to surveil their own property, and yours is in the background, or if it's to surveil the neighbor.
Right.
I believe that's.
Correct, but who, what, who would you, if your neighbor erected cameras facing your property and you felt uncomfortable, where would you go? Who would you reach out to?
Police, yeah.
I'd go to see Tom.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Not you, Tom.
No.
The other.
I don't care, I don't carry enough clout. Not even close.
Uh, there was, there were a lot of cases with infrared cameras where there was a concern about being able to see into the house that eventually resolved, like the police, they're allowed, I believe, to look at your house with an infrared camera, which lets you see the temperature, what's going inside, you basically looking for people growing pot in the basement.
Yeah, I could understand that.
Walls, there was a long period of legal battles over that.
Right.
And the other interesting thing is, everyone that puts up one of these new doorbells.
Right, well, that's.
Yo, doorbells.
Yes.
All that data goes up into the cloud and is recorded. So, the police now, the, at least one of the companies allows the police to request stored video, but the homeowner has to agree. So.
Right. Right, so if I put a ring doorbell on my front door, and it happens and my neighbor directly across the street gets recorded, you know, is, why, where's the line there? Because there's no way to stop the recording at the, at the edge of your property.
Correct.
Yeah.
But if your ring doorbell is on your mailbox facing your neighbor's property, then I think you have a harder time explaining that it's just capturing.
Sure.
Video.
Sure.
So, but like I said, I'm not the Tom that's going to make that determination.
Right. Phew.
Thank goodness, absolutely. Don't need to handle that hot potato. Okay, that's all I have. Does anybody else have anything they want to add to this?
Is there anyone?
Oh, no.
What was that? I didn't hear that.
She.
Left.
No, she got demoted.
Oh, she got demoted. She's back. You need to unmute?
Yeah.
There we go.
She is.
Is there any way that the Schultz can move their driveway or get a different exit?
We talked about that, but it's wetlands, yeah, there'd be a wetlands crossing.
Yeah, but it might be safer than the explosive situation it is now.
Yeah, well, I guess this is just the latest wrinkle in this ongoing saga.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, yep. So our next meeting is for August eleventh, twenty twenty, at seven thirty.
I will schedule that in Zoom, in case we're still meeting that way.
Uh, I would guarantee you we're gonna be meeting that way. I don't think this is changing anytime soon.
I don't think so either, but I was being hopeful.
Yeah, yep.
Yeah, I hope potentially till the end of the year.
Yeah, I'll schedule that for you tomorrow.
I appreciate that, thank you.
No problem. And just so I'm clear, tomorrow, if possible, I'm expecting Tim Wheeler between eight and noon to pick up things from your mailbox. And if he's not able to make it, I will meet Tom at town offices at five o'clock.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And then, as de facto chair voted in, I'm still questioning the vote, but I guess I can't, oh, I can't overturn a, a majority vote here. So I need to chat with probably town clerk, right, for the passcodes to upload agendas to town government, my town government?
Yes.
Okay, so you and I will have a chat.
Okay.
You know, evidently.
Planning board email.
Actually, to the best of my knowledge, all of the planning board members have authority to go in and put an agenda on. That way, if something happened at ten o'clock, you, it's independent of when my office hours are.
Right. I, I know I used to put on minutes and all that stuff for the Town Manager Study Committee, but I don't know if I was authorized to go in on the planning board stuff. You think we were, all of us?
Yes, because I don't know who, who would be said, you know, I, I'll, I'll be the one to change the meeting. And I don't want to hold up any of the members.
Right, but we would have had to have a password, correct?
When I put you in, it's, it's, I send you a, a first time password, and then when you go in, you pick up your own password.
Oh, dear God, okay, I'll have to look.
I've been able to post minutes, I know.
Without a password?
No, he would have his own password.
I think I do a password.
Yeah.
And it, it's true, Carolyn's right. There is a planning board email address that I don't think any of us have ever paid much attention to, and that probably is where those plans went that Eloise sent the other day. I mean, they probably went to the planning board box and none of us access it, so.
Okay.
And there must be passwords for that, too.
I would imagine.
That I don't know, you'd have to talk to your former.
Chief Galvin, I believe, set up those passwords.
Okay.
Okay.
And if not, CM Geeks might be able to help you out.
Okay.
Who knows, people might be trying to say things to us that we want to hear.
I'm sure.
Alrighty. If we don't have anything else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this lovely gathering.
I move that we adjourn till August, what, eleventh?
Eleventh, that's correct.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask you to vote by roll call vote. Tim?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Jay?
Aye.
And Tom, aye. It's unanimous vote.